We're all in place here? Thank you, welcome to the meeting. At this point, I would like to invite you to stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, thank you for joining us this evening. We have quite a, quite of, an audience tonight. We're very glad to see you all here tonight, so thank you for coming. And before we proceed on, I would just like to make one just very brief comment to Dr. Denny. We are delighted to see you here tonight, and we are so very sorry to hear the passing of your wife this past week. So, anyway, our condolences are heartfelt, prayers and thoughts are with you and your family. All right, we will move on to the report by the Superintendent, Dr. Henson.
Couple of items to mention to you this evening. The Shawnee Mission North Navy Junior Reserve Officers Training Corps earned the overall title in the Springfield Interservice Drill and Athletic Competition Championships, which included competitors from Kansas, Missouri, and Illinois. This championship title brought their record to 5-0 for their season. So I'll go ahead and pause at 5-0 for the season, and we'll talk about seasons. And so, Mrs. Bisfield demonstrates this tonight, but it's the Go Lancers, so we want to congratulate the East High School Football Team for just, if you haven't watched the game yet from last Friday night, I don't know when you're going to see ever more exciting high school football game, but anyway, East won in double overtime last Friday night, and they play Saturday in Emporia at 1:00. And right now, the forecast is sunny and 60, so we'll see if that holds true. Obviously, I don't have a profession as a meteorologist, but that's what NOAA says right now. Congratulations to the East Football Team, what a great honor, and hopefully, we're recognizing them at the December Board Meeting for a state championship. Also, tonight on the screen before you, and in my hands tonight, we received, it was a little bit of surprise to us, but we received the 2014 Legacy Award to the Shawnee Mission School District from the Greater Kansas City Hispanic Chamber of Commerce. And so, in relation to our collaboration and working on a number of things, one of those things is the KC Biz Fest that you're familiar with. And so, anyway, the 2014 Legacy Award to the Shawnee Mission School District, Greater Kansas City Hispanic Chamber of Commerce. And so, congratulations to each of you for your work in relation to this very noble endeavor. Also, recognitions, our Shawnee Mission student journalists received multiple awards from the Journalism Educators Association and the National Scholastic Press Association. More than 30 honors were presented to students from Shawnee Mission. Pacemaker Awards were given to students at East and also at the Northwest Student Newspaper. And so, congratulations to the students specifically from East and from Northwest as well for their student publications and very specific honors and awards. The Pacemaker is the highest honor given to student journalists by the National Scholastic Press Association. So congratulations to the teachers and students in this regard. You heard a little bit about this in the work session tonight, for those of you that were in attendance, but our Safety and Security Director, John Douglas, has concluded his Safety and Security Town Hall sessions, which took place in each of our high school attendance areas in the school district. Attendees were able to hear Mr. Douglas speak about his comprehensive security plans for the district. And so, if you missed the informational events, you can watch the video online. More information about the emergency operations plan can also be found on the district's website. And so, thank you for all of you that were in attendance, Mr. Douglas, for these five nights. Again, if you missed it, there's a video online, and more about the plan is available on our district's website. I've had the opportunity to present information to several groups regarding our upcoming bond and LOB questions, which are on the ballot, to provide information about these specific issues. In fact, you know, it was late getting to work session tonight because the Greater Kansas City Chamber of Commerce endorsed the local option budget question for the five of the six school districts in Johnson County that are having this issue on the ballot, and they also endorsed our bond issue. And so, just today, the Leewood Chamber of Commerce and the Greater Kansas City Chamber of Commerce endorsed both of the questions on our ballot. And so, Dr. Neal has put together a lot of information on our website in relation to the local option budget. You can see a sample of that slide there before you. And so, the local option budget bond election button, it's on the right side of the homepage. That information is displayed there for you in, in great detail. So that's a brief report tonight on so many of the exciting things that are going on in the school district. As you know, it is Thanksgiving week, and so, students are not happy about this, but we get out after tomorrow, and so they may have to come to school Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday. And so, I trust everyone has a great Thanksgiving vacation in that regard, so thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Henson. We'll move on to open forum. And I'll just read a brief synopsis. At the beginning of each regular business meeting, the Board of Education provides an open forum as an opportunity for public comment on school district issues. Agendas are published in advance to notify the community of the topics under consideration. Patron comments are welcome, but those wishing to speak to an issue not included in the agenda will usually not receive a response during the meeting. I believe we have two speakers tonight. The first is Allison Lever.
Hello.
Hi.
I'm a teacher at Westridge Middle School. I've taught for 14 years, and I've never been more stressed out than I have been this year. I got to school the very first day, having had a couple of days to prepare and to try to get things together, to try to figure out how the first few days is going to go. It's been very sporadic that my Apple TV will work, maybe. It may or may not upload a video. It may or may not have Internet access. It's been very stressful, to put it mildly. We were encouraged that we would have time to adjust, and yet, the procedures that are in place don't really allow us time to adjust. The kids that are in front of me don't allow time to adjust, so that my day stresses me out, literally, from start to finish, and honestly, from the time I leave the house until I get home. My typical day, actually today, was a perfect example of what happens. During my first hour, I prepared for a lab that was kind of fun. We put different items into a bag, mystery bag lab, and so, we put different items into the bag, and the kids are supposed to feel it and try to figure out what the items are in it, and then write down a list of why they think what they think it is inside, and then how that relates to science, and especially how it relates to the layers of the earth, which is what we're studying right now. My plan was to show the worksheet that normally I would have panted out, I now wanted to put it on the overhead, so that they could then copy it down onto paper and turn that in. I would have even tried to use a Google Classroom or another form, but those have worked sporadically. A lot of times, I end up having to airdrop it to each individual student, which takes a really long time, and sometimes this kid will show up, and sometimes they won't. I usually do make a few copies extra when I make a plan, or when I photocopy something, or when I put it into Google Classroom, with the expectation that some kid will come in with not a working iPad, or have some issue that they left it in a class, or whatever, so I make a few copies extra, with the plan that that's just going to be for the few kids it doesn't work for. And then the day happens, and it's not just 15, it's 30, and then it's another 30. And so, I'm now trying to run to the copier to make 30 copies between every class, or to try to make 150, so I can have them for the full day. The copiers take quite a bit longer. I can't send a kid with an emergency copy to anyone, because there's no one there to make a copy. There's no one there to take down a code, and if I did give them a code, they have to have my password. If I give them my password, that's pretty much to everything. It's extremely hard to prep for Plan A, and then Plan B, and then Plan C, and by the time I get to my afternoon, it's, might be Plan M, or X, or Y, and at that point, I'm The printing is very difficult. Trying to take a day off is very difficult, because subs don't have access to the computer. Again, even if they have access, it's not necessarily going to work. It's typically a video, which then doesn't always work well either, because you have to plan for when those videos are going to occur. I only have a 45-minute plan. I have to plan all of my lessons for the 150 kids that I see every day. Additionally, I have to grade the papers for 150 students that I have every day, and while I could offer time at home, that's my time, and it's hard for me to offer that. I have two small children. I wish I could offer a better solution, but the biggest solution I can offer is, I need more time. When I started working, we had a middle school concept where we had our personal plan, and then we had a team plan, and we worked really hard to try to make kids successful in middle school, so that they would have the skills to be able to be successful when they got to high school. That was removed two years after I started teaching, and it's been stressful since then, but this year's definitely been kind of the cap, so that's really all I have to say.
Okay. Thank you. And our next speaker is Nancy Fritz.
Good evening, members of the Board, Dr. Henson and Cabinet members. I want to take this opportunity to announce that the members of the Shawnee Mission School District Bargaining Unit have overwhelmingly ratified the negotiated addendum to the 2014-15 agreement between the Board of Education of USD 512 and NEA Shawnee Mission for an early retirement separation incentive plan. We look forward to the same positive vote by members of all of you this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Fritz. Okay, we will move on to the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of October 27. So move. Thank you, Mrs. Bisfield. Thank you, Mrs. Mack. Are there any corrections, additions, or comments? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries 7-0. Thank you. Move on to the adoption of the agenda.
Move adoption of the agenda.
Thank you, Mrs. Neighbor.
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Lovins. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries 7-0. Thank you. Move on to approval of routine business by consent. Is there any item that any board member would like removed from the consent agenda?
I move approval of routine business by consent.
Second, Mrs. Neighbor. Thank you, Mrs. Goodburn. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries 7-0. Moves us through the consent agenda to letter N for action. Dr. Henson.
Letter N has already been referenced for you tonight, is an agreement that our bargaining team reached an agreement with the NEA Shawnee Mission Negotiation Team as well. It's in relation to, and for brevity's sake, say, an early retirement incentive. And so, what it is for the individuals represented under the bargaining agreement by NEA is 60 percent, if they're eligible for retirement, 60 percent of their base salary, the payment is spread over a five-year period of time. And so, we have well over 300 individuals in the district that are eligible for retirement if they so choose. It is entirely their option, whether they want to take advantage of the incentive or not. And so, looking again at the number of individuals that are eligible for the incentive, there are a large number. Now, I want to clarify, these are for the individuals represented by the bargaining agreement between the district and with the National Education Association Shawnee Mission. There are other groups of employees that are not represented through that agreement, and so, we're not talking about that tonight. This is just the negotiations that was held with NEASM. So those other groups, we can talk about that at some other board meeting, but tonight it's just this agreement. So it's, excuse me, it's a 60 percent base salary spread out over five years. They have options of what they want to do with the proceeds in that regard, and again, it's totally voluntary, what they want to do with that in that regard. So be happy to answer any questions that you have for you, Dr. Denny.
It's my understanding this is a one-time, applies only this year addendum. The word addendum in my parlance means it's a part of a contract. So is the language clear that when we start negotiations next year, this is not a part of the agreement?
Mr. DePiro.
It was specifically stated in the agreement that this is not going to be part of any of the continuing language. This is a one-time addendum to the contract that goes away at the end of this year, and it could obviously be brought up again and renegotiated in future years, but it won't be a continuing provision that would be incorporated into the, into the agreement with the NEA. There's also a February 1 deadline that is encompassed in this agreement, that in order to take advantage of the payment, people have to give us irrevocable notice by February 1, and so, we, so we could have an idea of how many teachers we need to replace, and how the impact of the incentive worked.
So it's a February 2 notification date, and the importance to us, obviously, and we don't know how many individuals take advantage of the incentive, but let's say it's a large number, and we're trying to fill a number of teaching vacancies. It allows us to have that head start, if you will, as early as possible, and so, trying to find the, the very best candidates for these positions. So it's that irrevocable resignation prior to February 2. It is a one-time opportunity. It is an addendum only in this regard.
Okay, Mrs. Neighbor. I would move approval of N 1. Second, thank you, Mrs. Mack. Is there any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries 7-0. Thank you. Move on to letter P, actually by the Superintendent, Dr. Henson.
The legislative platform for 2015 is before you tonight. Dr. Neal's worked diligently to try to streamline the process, and so, we'd be happy to entertain questions tonight, or certainly comments or anything that you want altered. In relation to our legislative platform and announcements of, you know, state budget shortfall, a lot of questions right now in relation to what does that mean, and you know, we really don't know. And so, there's a lot of speculation that's out there in relation to what may or may not happen with funding. Could, is it possible that we would see a reduction in state revenue during the current fiscal year? And the answer is yes. Certainly, I think that is a possibility. The likelihood of that happening, we really don't know at this point in time. So looking at our legislative positions, not only for this year, for the remainder of this fiscal year, but also for the next year as well, this will be a very, very important legislative session, things that happen or maybe not happen in relation to the impact on the Shawnee Mission School District. So we've tried to be brief in that regard, but certainly, other things that you want added to or taken away, we'd be happy to entertain any of those issues tonight.
Does anyone have any comments on this? Mrs. Neighbor.
One of the concerns that we might just keep our eye open on is conversation about where some of the funds are going to come from for the shortfall in the budget. And two of the areas that they're looking at, again, are transportation and CAPERS. And I would be concerned if they get into CAPERS again, because up until this last year, it was $8.2 billion in the hole, and that is a retirement, not just for teachers, but a lot of public entities, police, people that are involved in, in government, but that is a huge shortfall. So they've had a tendency to prolong paying that back, and so, I don't know if they would try to raise benefits again, or input requirements from teachers, but I think we need to be very aware that that is one big pot of money that, and they've talked about not funding it with the $50 million that they were supposed to do this year. So if they don't do that, they're, they're going backwards again. So just, we might just keep our eyes open on that.
Absolutely. We'll see what the session brings us here.
So on that point, should we add another bulleted item stating that we oppose any reduction to, to our funding for this fiscal year? Is that something that should be here, should not be here?
I'd say that's very timely.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. I would agree.
So we oppose any reduction in funding for the current fiscal year, or just oppose any reduction in funding?
Well, they'll be trying to do it two year, well, I would make it longer, because one, they're going to have to make up the shortfall this year, and then they're probably going to look at doing a two-year budget again. And so, if they look at doing that, and appropriating money out of that fund at a later time, or not funding their portion, it's still going to put a negative on that. And I don't think there's been any increase in payout from CAPERS for ever and ever, so, or it seems like. And so, we need to at least get it funded for people that are retiring. If we're asked, I mean, if people are going to look at retiring, and then they look at possibly a shortfall and changes in rules, I think we need to let people know that it's not appropriate to, to take away people's retirement after the work they've done, no matter where they are.
Any other comments? Mrs. Mack?
I would approve the adoption of 2015 legislative platform with the addendum that Dr. Henson suggested, and possibly working that, that we oppose further reduction, and how somehow tie that to the words, I believe we use the word sustainable funding source. I'm so tie it with, tie that language in with that.
Okay, and that would be under the key legislative positions, I would assume. Okay.
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Bisfield. Any other discussion?
I would just offer, Leanne, I really like the streamlined, I think it makes a lot of sense. I think it looks, I think the piece looks great.
I would agree. I think the one sheet is, front and back is very concise, rather than the booklet that we've had in the past, and it's amazing how you can consolidate that into one sheet, so wonderful job.
I would also say that this will be online after we have voted.
Sure.
So that it can get wide distribution, and we can continue to have all of the patrons and those that are concerned about schools paying attention to what's going on in Topeka.
Correct, and there are updates throughout the session as well on the website, so that's a great source to look for that sort of thing.
Dr. Henson, I know that we have a lot of students here tonight, and I don't know if we want to share with them what we do with this legislative platform. I mean, I think they're here for government classes, I hope.
Is that why we have you guys in?
And if you're not, that's okay. If it's math, we can make that work too. But just a short explanation on why we do this, and how we share it with our leadership.
Yeah, thank you, Mrs. Neighbor. Obviously, what happens in our state capital, and what happens also in Washington DC, is so very critical to what we do here in the Shawnee Mission School District. And so, each year, on an annual basis, we meet with all of our represented representatives, it means House of Representatives and Senators as well, from the state. We meet with them here in this building to talk about issues that are of legislative priority for us. Annually, a legislative platform is drafted and created by this body. It is shared with our legislators. Certainly, the goal is to share it with our community as well. These are legislative priorities, things that are important to us as a school district, as a document that can be utilized by our Parent Teacher Association and a lot of other groups as well. These are legislative priorities. And so, as we look at legislation that might be introduced, that might be contrary to our legislative platform, it also gives us a document to say, this is something that was approved by the Shawnee Mission Board of Education, it's really important to us, and the introduction of whatever legislation that might be is in opposition to this, and so, we absolutely oppose the legislation. We do have a lobbyist in the school district as well, and so, Dr. Little is able to take this document and use it with all of the elected officials in Topeka in relation to our legislative platform. So an official legislative platform is a very important document, can be used by a lot of groups, a lot of individuals, but again, it's a written document saying, these are the things that are really important to us as a minimum. The issue that we can't address, sometimes things are introduced during the session, we have no idea why they were introduced, or the outcome of that introduction, and so, that's why we have a lobbyist, and we stay engaged in what goes on with Topeka. But again, that process, the legislative process, does have a dramatic impact on what we do in the Shawnee Mission School District, because it's very, very important. An official legislative platform is a document that carries significance for a school district. Anything else you want to add to or take away?
Oh, no, I can fill them in on more, but that's a good issue. Oh, and the process can take the entire term of the legislature, because what happens at the beginning oftentimes comes up at the end. So if you watch any of this, or you have an assignment to follow something, as they say, nothing's over until the fat lady sings and the session is done. And a session is two years now, it just started again.
Very good. Thank you, Mrs. Neighbor. We have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the adoption of the legislative platform with those changes, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries 7-0. Thank you very much. Dr. Henson, we will move into the second reading of a large list of policies here.
So the, the second reading of new board policies, and I believe that is numerical value 2, all the way through 48.
Correct.
So it's the second reading of the board policies, numerical value of 2 through 48. Be happy to entertain any comments, certainly from our task force, or questions from the board members as well. So second reading for the audience means these policies were here the month before, and so, this is just the second reading of the policies.
Is there any questions on those policies on their second reading?
I don't have a question, but again, I might mention that these do indeed show up in board docs, so people can find out what these policies are.
Very good. And these are all in regard to students, so it's a very long list of policies in our policy book.
I would move approval of P 2 through P 48.
Thank you, Mrs. Neighbor.
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Mack. Is there any other discussion? Saying none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries 7-0. And we will address the policies regarding students on their first reading.
So we have first reading of policies which go through 113.
Correct.
And so, again, there are a lot of policies, and for everyone's information, we do have a task force, Dr. Chapman, Dr. Denny, Mrs. Goodburn, and Mrs. Bisfield, that vet all of these policies, look at what we have now. We have policies that are proposed to us from the Kansas Association of School Boards, and they really helped a lot in vetting these policies as well. And so, these aren't things that we've just created, the policies have been presented to us, and they've been vetted through this task force, and so, it's the first reading. So if you have comments, questions, certainly get those to the task force, and so, we make sure we have all those clarified between now and December 15th.
One thing I'd like to point out, if I may, there's a, you'll notice there's a couple of policies that are a little bit out of order, 49, 50, and the very last one, 113. And that is because, because you are looking at them on a monthly basis, there were some policies that early on you were concerned about, that we would delete from this section, but then we leave ourselves open to some sort of liability or an issue. So there are three that are somewhat out of order. It wasn't a mistake, it was by design. The other thing that I want to make sure that you noticed, some of the policies in the past, we had policies, we had procedures, and we had exhibits. And the procedures were really more of a narrative of how the administrator, or administration, or the person responsible would put that policy into place. So now, the, the board policies are really strictly policies only, the procedures are not listed in here, and for the most part, they're listed in some other manual or booklet. And this section that you looked at, and you approved half, or will be looking at half this evening, and then the other half next month, those are all related to students. this evening, and then the other half next month, those are all related to students, and those procedures will be in the student, or the administrative guidelines that the administrators have, they're also posted online. So, you know, if there's any question about how that policy is actually administered, that's where you would look for that. Also, there is a tab that will have all the forms and appendix, appendices listed in board docs. So one of the policies this evening is the transfer policy. That form will also be altered, so you'll see that it says deleted in here, but it's really being added in that form or the appendices. And that, so I wanted to make sure that that was clear. And then the administrators will be operating with the new policies as soon as they're approved. So Debbie and I, and all the administrators that deal with these different sections, are working with the new policy as we go.
Very good. Are there any questions? Okay. There's no action needed, because they are first reading, we'll address them again at the December meeting. We will move on to the board financial report. Dr. Hinson.
The board financial report for the month of October is before you, and I don't mean for this to sound like a broken record, but it's pretty uneventful at this stage. And so as we look at revenues for the year, we're right on target, knock on wood, at this point, of what we would anticipate in light of the conversation that we talked about a little earlier, but there isn't anything that is extraordinary at all in relation to this month's financial report. And again, that's good news.
Does anyone have any questions about the board financial report? Okay, very good. We'll move on to comments from board members. Actually, I have a comment here. Are you guys all here for a government class, or what type of class are you joining us? Or you just were interested?
Interested.
Really? You were just?
Interested and government class.
And government class. How about you gentlemen over there?
She gets an A.
American government. Very good. Well, we're glad to have you here. Thank you for coming tonight. Any other comments from board members?
No answers.
Okay. Mrs. Goodburn.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving, absolutely. We hope everyone has a safe and wonderful Thanksgiving.
I move that the Board of Education recess to executive session in order to discuss personnel matters regarding non-elected personnel, and to discuss matters relating to the acquisition of real property. The meeting will reconvene in, so about?
Eight-ten? What time is this?
About eight-ten?
Let's say eight-oh-five.
Eight-oh-five. No further business will be conducted following the executive session.
Thank you, Mrs. Goodburn. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Mack. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries. There will be no business after our exec session, so thank you very much for coming tonight.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
[inaudible]